All right, seven o'clock, so I will start my script. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. All meetings and hearings listed in the agenda will also be done so through remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.shrewsburyma.gov/coronavirus. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch may do so by visiting www.shrewsburymediaconnection.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. This meeting will not include public comment. To listen to this meeting, dial one six three six four nine five one five seven four and enter the following PIN, six zero three five nine one three zero eight pound. Please mute your device.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Valerie Clemmie.
Present.
This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. We'll now turn to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, the chair, will introduce board members or staff members who have lead roles for particular items or guest speakers associated with items on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members first and then to staff members inviting comments or questions. I will then call upon members to offer a motion and then a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute or unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you're not speaking so as not to trigger your camera feed with background noise. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call though. We'll turn now to the first item on the agenda, which is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number two is the approved minutes of the October sixth, 2020 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. LeBeau. Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number three is announcements and reports. I have a couple here. One is that the Lake Quinsigaman Commission plans to lower the water level or draw down Lake Quinsigaman in Flint Pond on or about Monday, November second, 2020. Please see the website for more information, shrewsburyma.gov/lqc. The next one is in regards to Veterans Day. Join in on a rolling salute to veterans on eleven eleven twenty. All veterans are welcome to participate. Meet at Town Hall, one hundred Maple Avenue, in your vehicle at ten forty-five AM. At eleven AM, participate in a caravan to the World War One monument in front of Beal School and see signs of appreciation from local Boy Scout and Girl Scout troops and local officials. All veterans will receive cards from local students and scouts at Town Hall, contactless delivery to your car. For more information, you can visit the Parks and Recreation website. And I just had one other announcement that I just wanted to share with the board. It's more of a report. Just telling you that the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force had their first meeting on October nineteenth, so just over a week ago. It is almost a thirty-member task force. It's comprised of twenty-four community members and five delegates from different boards and committees in town. So we have the school committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Council on Aging, the Council on Disabilities, and the Board of Health all have a representative on the task force. And we are starting the work of getting to know one another, which is extremely challenging on this virtual platform with so many people. But we are fortunate to have the assistance of a facilitator. John Wortman is working with our group. And he has taken us through sort of a getting-to-know-you meeting. And we have given the group homework to come up with a vision statement for the town of Shrewsbury for our next meeting, which is going to be on November second. And while these meetings are not being televised, they are being, people can dial in if they are interested and then there will be minutes posted on the Diversity Equity and Inclusion webpage, which is on the town website. So I have to say, I was very impressed with how the first meeting went. I wasn't sure what to expect, given the size of the group and trying to do work that I think is extremely challenging in any circumstance, but especially when you can't get together in person to really read people and make those connections that are really necessary for this kind of work. I think that it went even better than I could have expected. I'm really looking forward to working with the group and to the next meeting. So just wanted to make sure that the board was kept up to date on the progress. So if there are no other announcements or reports, we can move on to item number four, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening, board members. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of updates for the board this evening, and I'll start with some information on the election. First and foremost, I'll let everyone in the public and anyone who cares to listen know that we are taking the advice of law enforcement officials and the Secretary of State very seriously with regards to any ballot box security issues, especially with incidents that occurred over the weekend in the city of Boston. We have installed surveillance cameras on the Town Hall that view the ballot box drop-off area, which is adjacent to the main entrance, to the right of the main entrance. It is red, white, and blue, and it says Town of Shrewsbury Dropbox. So everyone should feel confident that we are, one, emptying that box regularly throughout the day. It is being monitored by the police department and being monitored through video surveillance, so your ballots are safe. And we will collect them and process them as you deserve. Continuing on with the election, things are still very busy in the Town Clerk's office and with their volunteer corps managing the election. I'll provide some statistics thus far. Thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine individuals have requested early mail-in ballots. Eight hundred and thirty-eight individuals have requested absentee ballots. That totals fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven mail-in or absentee ballots. Of that fourteen thousand six hundred, eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-seven of those ballots have been received and processed by the Town Clerk. Add in another three thousand seven hundred and four early voters, brings the total votes received by the town of Shrewsbury to fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one. Now, one full week in advance of the election day. So today was our highest in-person early voter total. Four hundred and twenty voters came to the Town Hall today. Since we've been open since Saturday, October seventeenth, the fewest we've seen on daily basis is two hundred and eighty-three. So again, two hundred and sixty-three, excuse me. So again, today, four hundred and twenty early voters and over nearly fifteen thousand five hundred ballots have been cast within the town of Shrewsbury already. Just a couple other brief updates. Well, one other update on the election, I really just want to say thank you to Town Clerk Sandy Wright, Assistant Town Clerk Sharon Thomas, their staff of Michelle Bowers and Kathleen Thompson, and the efforts of volunteers and election workers. They're there when I get there in the morning and well after I leave. And the selectman's room, I know not everyone gets to view it, but it is voter central with voting processing machines and ballots and everything. All neatly organized, but it's a lot of material when you're looking at twelve thousand, fifteen thousand pieces of mail. So a job well done to the volunteers and to our staff. With regards to the Beal Construction Project, it's now over sixty percent complete. You're nearing full weather proofing and enclosure for the winter. Windows are going in. A lot of exterior brickwork has been completed. Still no budget challenges. Still only spent about sixty-six thousand in orders contingency out of four point three million, so the project is still doing very well. And finally, this evening, if anyone's been on Maple Avenue over the course of this week, you'll notice sidewalk work being completed where two new sidewalk modifications are being made to accommodate crosswalks. So there is now a crosswalk in front of the Town Hall and one closer to Gage Lane. And lights, flashing beacons will be going up to crosswalk locations on Maple Avenue this week. So that was for the Shared Streets Grant Program that the Planning and Economic Development Staff and Mr. Truman, who's on the call this evening, played a big hand in, and we thank them for their efforts. Mr. Truman designed these crosswalks a couple of years ago in preparation for work to be done, and we were fortunate to get this Shared Streets Grant this year and accelerate the work. So thank you to all their efforts. And that's it for the General Town Manager's Report, and I can pause to take any questions, and I would like to spend a few minutes on COVID-19.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
One question, please. Great to hear about the security associated with the drop-off ballot box. Our goal is not to catch people after the fact, but to discourage any bad actors. Is there, and maybe you said it, Mr. Mizikar, and I just missed it, is there any signage around the box itself indicating that it's under video surveillance?
Yes, there is signage. It's up to let folks know that.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just want to say how happy I am that we have those sidewalks going in near the Town Hall and also at Gage Lane. Thank you so much, Mr. Truman, for your efforts to make this possible. I know that it's something that residents who live in the area, but also on Election Day, when people are trying to cross the street there to go to Town Hall of the Senior Center to vote, seems to be the time of year when I hear most from people that they wish there was a crosswalk. So this is a really great, it's good timing, and it's a really great addition to that area, which can get pretty busy and difficult for crossing. So thanks for that. And so, Mr. Mizikar, we can go right on to the coronavirus update.
Okay. Thank you. I will share my screen. Okay, so I'm going to start off this evening with my standard report to the board, and then I'm just going to take a couple extra minutes, given the trend that we're seeing within the community. So September fourteenth to October twenty-seventh, actually, excuse me, that should say October fourteenth to October twenty-seventh. In total, we now have four hundred and ninety-four positive cases, which is an increase in forty-four from the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, which was October thirteenth. Excuse me for having those typos in this first slide. From the period of October eleventh through October twenty-fourth, there are fifty-four positive cases. The reason I've chosen those dates is because that is the current reporting period that will determine our color status through the Commonwealth Community COVID Reporting System. Having fifty-four positive cases during that period of time will mean that we still remain in our red status is what we're projecting for this Thursday's report. That will continue our red status that came out last Thursday on October twenty-second of red. That was the first actual week that the town was in red, despite the state report the week prior, which has since been corrected back to yellow. During that fourteen-day period, there was nine point six cases per hundred thousand residents per day. And anytime we're greater than eight point zero, we will be indicated by red on the state map. We're also trending higher in the percent positivity. So as you hear all the time, quote, "It's not just more testing equals more cases," but a higher percentage of tests are coming back positive. And on October thirteenth, our percent positivity was one point zero six, and on October twenty-second, it was one point seven nine percent. We have switched to reporting COVID cases on a daily basis. Over the last few days, we've seen a little bit of a downturn in comparison to the last few weeks. We are certainly not willing to confirm that's a trend yet, but today we didn't have any new cases reported to us, which is always a welcome number. So we're currently red, and given the number of cases in that forty we will remain red on the state's next report. Anytime we have more than forty-four cases, we will be indicating it's red. Still no notifications of any new deaths within the community. And town operations remain in place as they are on, the town employees are alternating schedules, open to the public by appointment only and open to early voters now for the rest of this week. Employee guidance and group schedules will be in place through January fifteenth. The only changes that we would make would be reducing onsite staff if the situation with the virus indicates that we need to reduce staffing. Otherwise, we remain in this status through January fifteenth. So moving on from my regular report, I wanted to update some numbers that I provided through a presentation on SMC last week. The state is using a four-color codification system that they update now every Thursday. So you can go, you can just Google Massachusetts coronavirus map and click on the mass.gov community trend information that will enable you to search for the town of Shrewsbury and see what color we are indicated as. Any cases, again, of an incidence of greater than eight per hundred thousand of population is a red, and that's where we find ourselves now. And you can see through the graph on the right-hand side of the screen that that trend has been quite an accelerated trend per hundred thousand since the beginning of September to where we find ourselves on the last state report. There will be little change on this next report that comes out this week, given the total cases that we've seen over the last seven days. Again, the state's reporting is a two-week look back. It really updates numbers from the most recent week and attaches to the week prior to that. So it's a very measured and systematic approach to reporting at the state level. So as far as total positive cases on a month-by-month basis, I thought it was important to take a look at how October is playing out there at the bottom of the screen through October twenty-seventh. You'll see that over seventeen and a half percent of all of our COVID cases since the first was indicated on March nineteenth have come from October first through October twenty-seventh, and more than twenty-five percent of the cases have come since the beginning of September. If you trend October out on its daily incidents thus far, that would project a hundred and five total cases in October, meaning it's the second highest cases on a monthly basis, second only to April when we experienced the first surge around the end of the second week and beginning of the third week of April. So again, we're not trending in the right direction. We're seeing increased positivity rates day in and day out. And there's no provided clusters whenever we look at the data. It's just a general community spread. There are a lot of single residences with multiple positive cases within those residents, and thus some people are starting to use the term family spread. So individuals just have to think about all their actions when they interact. So four hundred and ninety-four total cases across the period of March through the current day. And the trend in the previous fourteen days and the previous thirty days is rather similar. Forty-six cases in the last fourteen days, ninety cases in the last thirty days. So nine percent of all of our cases have come within the last fourteen days. We're certainly on a significant uptick, excuse me. With regard to a comparison of the age range, I think this is important because this is a trend that is quite different than the spring of quote-unquote "who is getting infected by COVID-19." So there's been a hundred and five percent change from the beginning of September through the end of October in the age range of less than nineteen. We've more than doubled the number of individuals less than nineteen years of age who are positive for COVID-19 within the community. And the second highest category, as you see on this chart, is the twenty-two to twenty-nine-year-old cohort, who's increased thirty-eight percent. So we're seeing a lot more infections in the younger age groups, a lot less infections in the older age groups, certainly better for the mortality rate, as we haven't seen any deaths. But certainly something that we, in some ways, didn't expect whenever we were going through the first phase of this. At times, it appeared that those younger weren't being testing positive and weren't getting the virus, but that is certainly not the case. No age group is immune, and we're seeing a leveling out across all age cohorts, but a rapid increase in those younger in age. Just a chart comparison from those same two dates. So anywhere where the red bar exceeds the blue bar, we have a growing number or percentage of cases in that age group. And you can see, again, those two age groups are less than nineteen and from twenty to twenty-nine that are exceeding their positivity rate from prior to September second and then from the period of September second through October twenty-third. So quite concerning for those age groups. And that's all the information I have. Just want to reiterate that we're asking everyone to do what they can. The town is certainly taking actions and analyzing data. We don't have any reason to specifically target any sectors of the economy or any institutions where we're seeing spread, because that's not what the data is telling us. Seems to be a general community spread, seems to be spread with folks that are more familiar with each other as individuals gather and perhaps go inside as the weather gets colder. So we need you to just remember, just because you know someone doesn't mean you can't get COVID-19 from them. So wearing masks, washing your hands, keeping social distance, and all the general recommendations that the CDC, when you go about all aspects of your life, continue to be very important to hopefully stop this increase in cases that we've seen. And will enable the town to not have to take any actions that we have the power to do to help control the spread. Again, we're not seeing that. We don't want to have to take those actions, and we're asking for everyone's support in their thought process to enable us to not have to do that. I'm happy to take any questions of the board, and I'll stop sharing my screen.
Board members, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Mizikar?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Samia.
Through you to Kevin. Kevin, just a quick question on the CARES Act grant in terms of protective equipment or available monies. Have we put everything on order that we can to make sure we get it here by December thirtieth? Or if not, will it be, do we have any concerns with maybe backlog with everyone doing the same thing at the same time?
We're definitely seeing longer and longer lead times of securing supplies. We have a significant supply of personal protective equipment on hand. You know, not years' worth, but you know, ninety, a hundred and twenty days' worth for first responders and critical staff. We certainly have a similar amount of supply for cleaning supplies, but given the end of CARES Act funding and have to have it on hand, as you said, we are seeing longer lead times. But I'm very happy with our reserves as we have them now, but they're not endless, and we would be challenged by that again near the end of the winter or early spring if we're unable to access things between now and then.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Mizikar, I'm not sure if you mentioned that if the public was interested that you did record the segment for Shrewsbury Media Connection and that that's able to be accessed on their YouTube channel or at shrewsburymediaconnection.org. It's similar information, but it's a bit of a deeper dive into the numbers and the way that Shrewsbury is being impacted. And I thought that that was extremely informative and helpful for the community to see, especially as we head into what is becoming holiday season with Halloween starting off on Saturday, followed by Thanksgiving and then the December holidays. People needing to be vigilant and thinking about the ways in which gathering can be made safer. Thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number six, which is a meeting with Justin Souza, seven oh five PM, for an update on the Central Massachusetts Veteran Service District and to review the Act to review an act on the renewal of the Central Massachusetts Veteran Service District pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one fifteen, Section ten, for a two-year term to expire on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And Mr. Souza is here with us this evening to talk to the board a little bit about his role with the Central Massachusetts Veteran Service District and also just to answer any questions that board members might have. I'll turn it over to you, Justin.
Thank you. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. You may also hear my family in the background. I apologize. I don't have good Wi-Fi on the other side of the house, so I'm over here, and they're sort of over here as well. I apologize. So in 2013, the district was formed. Shrewsbury signed an agreement with three other towns, Westboro, Northboro, Grafton, to constitute a Veteran Service District. That district was renewed in 2017 and is now up again for another renewal in 2020. I am the sole full-time employee as Director of the District. I do most of the day-to-day operations. I have two part-time Veteran Service Agents, Michael Perna, and he works mostly with Shrewsbury. And John Gallinow works mostly in Westboro. We administer Chapter one fifteen, a state benefit that is paid at the local level and reimbursed to the town at seventy-five percent by the state and one hundred percent for certain budget categories, typically transitional veterans who are transitioning into a permanent residential state. We also help do VA claims for the district for veterans who have disabilities or financial need they need to apply for federal benefits for. And then we also hope veterans apply for local tax exemptions, and we make sure that the towns are current on the different exemptions that are available for the townsfolk to elect to have at the local level, because most of them are local options. So I come before you tonight to ask if you have any specific questions about the district and if you would be, or you are going to be speaking about renewing the district. We need to send a letter signed by the Chair of the Select Board sometime before the end of November to have the State Department of Veteran Services review it, and okay, I don't see any hindrances to this process. And we also have had a signed letter come back from Westboro, Northboro, Grafton, and Shrewsbury, Grafton, Westboro, Northboro, Grafton. So Shrewsbury will be the, last but not least, town to approve that. So pending your questions, that is my short update. So pending your questions, that is my, my short update. Let me know what your, your questions are and hopefully I can answer them. You are.
Yeah, I am muted. Thank you, Mr. Souza. Board members, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I just have one question, Mr. Souza. Since COVID really started rising in the, in March and April, have, have you seen more requests for from veterans looking for help to get services?
Yes, directly, we've had three Chapter one fifteen applications for veterans who have lost employment. I expect that number to rise a little bit as the pandemic unemployment assistance begins to come to an end. One of those veterans just applied this week because his PUA did run out. We had someone right in March, they lost their employment and were not eligible for unemployment because of the nature of their job at the time. So they jumped onto one fifteen, not in Shrewsbury, that was in Northboro. But the other two of the three were in Shrewsbury. They actually are residing at the Veterans Aid Facility as well because in conjunction with their unemployment, they also lost their housing. So there is also a anticipation that there's going to be several new requests for benefits for Chapter one fifteen. I'm guessing before the end of the calendar year because of PUA running out, but we've also seen a, a I would consider it a decent increase, probably ten more people than would normally apply in any given time period for VA healthcare. A lot of the younger seniors, people that are just retired at sixty-two or sixty-five and who did not look at the VA as an option viably because they were, you know, they were still employed. I apologize. So I have seen a little bit of a, of an increase in, in need. But it hasn't gotten to pandemic proportions yet. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Souza, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to mental health benefits for veterans, if those are also something that you coordinate and then are provided?
So we have what's called the Vet Center in Worcester and so VA facility that is separate but equal to the VA. It's paid for by the VA, but the the services are not integrated with your VA record typically because of the nature of the mental health care that's provided. And typically you'll see your, your police fire and other first responders that were in the military that don't want their record in any way. You know, they're going to the VA for mental health. They, there's kind of a stigma on that. They will go to the Vet Center if they're eligible. That being said, the Vet Center is only available for combat or like hazardous deployment veterans who went to basically a combat zone or somewhere where they're in a hazardous duty area. So any Cold War veterans who were like Germany probably won't have the option to go there pending certain other other types of incidents that may have occurred. So that is available for most modern era. Go for one and two veterans and Vietnam veterans. And then there is a regular mental health aspect to the VA that's available to veterans who are, are in the VA. If they're, if the veteran is not eligible for the VA, we'll first look at their regular health insurance and see if they can, you know, get help from a, a regular mental health provider. And if that's not available, sometimes Home Base is able to help. Based out of Boston, they're actually trying to do a big push in the Worcester area now. They had a webinar a few weeks ago about trying to start some of what they do in Boston, but moving those programs over here to Worcester because they recognize Worcester is, is the second largest city in New England and has a lot of I would say underprivileged veterans who are not able to go to Boston for treatment. So they want to try to move over here. So if a veteran identifies that they, they need help, especially mental health, I'll ask them some general questions to determine their eligibility based on their type of service and their area of service. And I'll lay out the different options that may be available to them and help them explore those and help them gain access to them by giving them contact numbers or you know, worst case scenario, going with them to the facility. I have not done that yet with anyone, but I did offer one veteran who was in kind of a bad place. If he wanted me to accompany him, I was going to follow him in my vehicle, not with him in the car because I don't want to endanger myself. But I would follow him to the facility and walk him to the door if he needed it. But he did not take me up on that offer. So he went by himself and he's currently getting help. So people come through and, and I'm, I'm, I'm willing to get them there if they need it, but I typically try to give them the information lead the horse to the water and let the horse take the drink, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
For that answer.
Kind of long-winded. There's a lot of information in here, so.
Sure.
If I go too long, I apologize.
No, that's, that's fine. Definitely something I was interested in hearing more about.
Yeah, it's definitely a big issue, I think, with COVID because we're coming more, becoming more and more isolated as this goes along, you know. So I've been encouraging any of the veterans I speak with. I kind of drop the, the hint to do what we call buddy checks, just to call their close friends who they know are veterans and just do a regular regular check-in once in a while, you know, connect with people they haven't talked with in a while, like myself. I've, I've done that. Some of my people actually just learned some better sad information about one of my, my, my we deployed in two thousand and eleven together and she just died from some health complication. So that was one of the buddy checks today. One of my friends called me and said, hey, I don't know if you know, and we chatted for a while, so.
Yeah, sorry.
Like, yeah, it's, she was more of a, an acquaintance than a friend, but it's always sad to hear when someone young, she was only thirty-one, someone young passes, so. But it happens, you know, happens to everyone. So at some point you're gonna have some friends who happen to go. So we're just available for each other to talk. My buddy Mike and I talked for like a half hour because of that, I think. So it was good. It's very good.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for that information. If there's no other questions from the board, we can go ahead and take a motion on the letter that we need to send.
And I should have provided a copy to Kevin's office. I hope he, I think he made.
Yeah, I believe it's in the drive.
Okay.
We all have a copy.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I move the board act to approve the renewal of the town of Shrewsbury as a member of the Central Mass Veteran Service District pursuant to MGL Chapter one fifteen, Section ten, for a two-year term to expire November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, Mr. Souza, you're all set. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. And your kids were no bother at all. They were actually pleasant to listen to.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're two sweethearts. Thanks. Very much appreciate your time. And you
Thank you.
With the speak in front of you. I hope you have a good night.
Good evening. Item number seven is to review an act on the potential closure of town buildings and alternative work schedules for staff on Friday, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, Thursday, December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and Thursday, December thirty-first, twenty twenty. So this, Mr. Mizikar, if you wanted to share a little bit more about this item. Yep, you're still muted. All right, I can do it also.
No, I, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So we have been discussing, you know, the challenges that employees face and looking to provide some accommodations to them with, you know, not being able to compensate them under normal conditions because of the financial situation that the town has found itself. And one of the things that I was recommending and been engaging with the board on is seeking the closure of town buildings on the day after Thanksgiving, which is a very light workday. And then continuing with our tradition of closing for a half a day on December twenty-fourth, but then also closing for a half a day on December thirty-first, New Year's Eve. So again, this would be a day of paid leave for town staff and will accommodate town employees who have non-traditional work schedules so that they can have the benefits because sacrifices have been made across all departments and all classes. So that would be the recommendation for a half a day on the November twenty-seventh, excuse me, a full day on November twenty-seventh and then a half a day on December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, considering the times that we were, we are in, I have absolutely no objection to this. I think this is a a good action. I think we all need to be a little kinder and gentler these days. And I think this is a good statement to make to our employees. So I would, I would move approval also.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I, I would agree with Mr. LeBeau on this. I think that the all the employees have done a great job navigating through this pandemic. And I, I think I agree with him that it's a compassionate move, shows that we do care about our employees and it's a way to give back to them for everything they've done. So I agree with Mr. LeBeau completely.
So that motion has been made and seconded. There's no further discussion. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number eight is to review an act on the road closure request from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, for a closure of Cross Street on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, from seven A M to five P M for the installation of water and sewer lines in the vicinity of thirty-six Cross Street. Mr. Truman, I know that you're with us here this evening and that you've also provided a sketch of the Cross Street detour for us. If you had anything more that you wanted to add, I know I was glad to see this is on a Wednesday so that it's not going to impact buses because it's a remote school day for Shrewsbury.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, the only, the, the only thing that has actually changed, I told the contractor today, he's not able to do it tomorrow because he did not do his big save. So he's looking to do it next week. But he doesn't have a date specific, so what I was hoping is we could approve it just, you know, for the week of the, the second date to be determined. And then, you know, once I get that date, we will do a typical outreach to, you know, the residents in the area to let them know that what the date's going to be. It, it's a small street. It really shouldn't affect anybody. He's, he should be in and out in a day or less. But it probably shouldn't have any major impacts, but the date did change. So I just want to just update thought on that.
So it won't necessarily be on a Wednesday, then?
We can try and shoot for Wednesday. It's really, some of it's weather dependent and, you know, really when he gets his, his, this is a private contractor, so it's not really a town project that we have too much control over. So the board prefers to be a Wednesday. I can certainly try and push him in that direction.
Is this for one of the houses that's being built there?
Yes, it's the, well, it's one of the empty, well, the house that they knocked down, the two behind the house, two lots have been built. It's the one that's left.
Okay.
So there's been a problem for a while. He's finally looking to do the water and sewer connection. It's really the sewer that he has to go across the street for. The water is actually on the shoulder side of the house, so he really should be able to get done quicker, but it's a very small street, so it just made more sense to close it down.
Oh, definitely. I'm well familiar with it. It's on my walking route. So that's why I was just questioning the, the buses that use it and also the day of the week.
We coordinate with the bus, you know, the school to power on the bus, as we know, so.
Okay.
I give them as much notice as we can.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiPaolo.
I, I would agree with you. I, I think we should push for Wednesday, but I think it gives for the least amount of inconvenience. So I, I would try to push for that if it's not practical because of other considerations and I know we've shut roads before and coordinated with the school and public safety, so. But I think it would be better all around if we could do it on Wednesday, on a Wednesday.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will take a motion. You're muted there, Mr. LeBeau.
Because Valerie tells me my mic's making noise. Madam Chairman, I'm not sure I, I'm going to have this quite right. I move the board approve a road closure on Cross Street as proposed by the Engineering Department. I believe I heard now this would be next week, the week of November second from set for a one-day period from seven A M to five P M.
That is correct, yeah.
Second.
One other, I have one other question for you, Mr. Truman. What about Meals on Wheels access for people, if, if someone needs to be delivered a Meals on Wheels that lives on Cross Street? Because I believe there is a resident there that receives Meals on Wheels daily. What will happen in that?
I can certainly find out the contact, Madam Chairman, and figure out, you know, who the contact will be on the, now when we know that date.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So the motion has been made and seconded. So, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thanks, Mr. Truman.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Item number nine is to review an act on the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee relative to the Medicare Eligible Retiree Health Insurance Program for the calendar year twenty twenty-one pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-two B, Section three.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Madam Chairman, I have to recuse myself from this article because of a conflict. So I guess I'll just move my, mute my mic and dock in my screen. I don't know how else to do this. I won't know when to come back, so.
We'll shout and holler for you.
Okay.
All right, very good. Mr. Mizikar.
Thank you. Yes, so this is the annual rate renewal for our retiree over sixty-five Medicare eligible health insurance plans. We have four hundred and sixty-two subscribers who take these plans and the rate renewals are quite favorable again this year. We, about sixty percent or about two hundred and eighty of our subscribers fall within to the rate plans that are experiencing a zero percent renewal. There are three of the six plan, three of the seven plans that are at zero percent for the year. Two of these plans, two of the zero percent plans, the Medex and the Blue Cross plan are fully insured and the balance are Medicare plans and the rates are set by the federal government. The fully insured plans, the rate are set by the West Suburban Health Group and they were held at zero for this year, given the trend. There's a total budget, budget impact of about twelve thousand dollars for the annualized for these changes. So for the rest of the fiscal year, this will fall into about six thousand dollars, which we have prepared for adequately in the budget. And we just look for your affirmation of in setting of these rates with the recommendation of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Any questions? Mr. LeBeau.
Madam Chairman, I move the board approve and affirm the West Suburban Health Group's proposed senior rates for calendar year twenty-one.
Second.
So questions, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, Mr. DiPaolo, you may come back and join us.
Thank you.
Item number ten is to review an act on the streetlight request from Casilia Carvalho, twelve Farallon Circle for two streetlights in the vicinity of five, eight, nine, twelve, and fourteen Farallon Circle. The resident writes that adding these lights will promote security for the community and also provide safety for drivers, riders, and pedestrians and sent a number of pictures of the area in which the lights are being requested for installation. So I would ask Mr. Mizikar to send this over to Selco for review, please. If that's okay with the board. Now it says review and act. Do we need to vote on this? Recall that we did. Recall that we do. No, okay, good. Okay, item number eleven is to review and act on the reappointment of Alden F. L. Harris II, one sixty-three South Consegman Avenue, to the Shrewsbury Media Connection, Inc. Advisory Board, for a term ending with the 2023 SMC Annual Meeting and Election pursuant to the Shrewsbury Media Connection, Inc. bylaws as adopted on August twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Madam Chairman, I think Mr. Harris has done a fine job with this and other public service enterprises in the past. Then I move we reappoint him.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number twelve is to review and act on the reappointment of Robert Holland, eight Raymond Avenue, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number thirteen, review and act on the reappointment of Caitlin Gentile, nine Saxon Lane, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Item number fourteen is to review and act on the reappointment of Jennifer Baskard, fourteen E Farmington Drive, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Myself, aye. And item number fifteen is to review and act on the reappointment of Deborah Daldado, three eighteen Spring Street, to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term to expire on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, that brings us to correspondence. Item number sixteen is a letter dated September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, from Dan Cordo, Office of Leasing and State Office Planning, regarding the Commonwealth search for lease space. They're looking for flex and light industrial space in a number of locations, Shrewsbury being one of them. Item number seventeen is a letter dated October first, twenty twenty, from Omni Environmental Group, six Lancaster County Road, regarding a permanent solution statement with conditions for nine oh five Hartford Turnpike. Item number eighteen is an email dated October eleventh, twenty twenty, from Ellen Jacobson, six one one four Arbor Drive, regarding ballot questions. And I'd just like to take a moment to address the questions in Ms. Jacobson's letter to us. She was asking about the two ballot questions that are being proposed, put forth, questions three and question four. And I just wanted to clarify for Ms. Jacobson and also for the viewing public that there are two local ballot questions on the November ballot, but only question three is being brought forth by the town. The selectmen took a very firm stance against bringing question four, which is the Community Preservation Act, forward right now on the November ballot, because we are unanimously supporting the police station at this time and the emergency communication system. And we didn't want to be asking taxpayers to be supporting two things at once, especially in light of coronavirus. We recognize as a board that a tax increase will present a challenge for some in our community. However, we also recognize that this project is critical and is not going to get any less expensive if we push it off. The police station, if you recall, was already postponed while we took advantage of time-sensitive state grant funding to build Sherwood, the library, and the current, currently the Beal School. And we did decide to move forward with the police station only and hold off on the town hall expansion and the senior center. And there are no plans to move forward with those projects at this time or in the foreseeable future. We do understand that there are people who will find a tax increase to be a hardship. And if the question does pass on the ballot, we would encourage those residents to reach out to the treasurer's office if they truly do need some sort of a payment schedule in order to handle that burden. So I just wanted to make sure that we addressed her questions in her letter. So item number nineteen is an email dated October thirteenth from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding Mass Taxpayers Foundation presented presentation to the Senate Revenue Working Group, a reality check on revenues and recovery. Item number twenty is an email dated October thirteenth, twenty twenty, from Keith Elms, the Animal Control Officer, regarding the quarterly return on the annual warrant. And this is the quarterly report that Mr. Elms submits to our board, letting us know the different calls that he had related to animals in the three-month period. Item number twenty-one is an email dated October fourteenth, twenty twenty, from State Representative Hannah Kane regarding the Baker-Pleito Administration submits revised fiscal year 2021 budget proposal. Item number twenty-two is an email dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty, from Stan Transiac, five sixty-two South Street, regarding the new forty-two million dollar building. Mr. Transiac was thanking us for our response at our prior meeting to his questions on the police station building project. Item number twenty-three is an email dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty, from Darius Bialy, thirty G Shrewsbury Green, regarding the fiscal year 2020 actual real, actual real estate tax bill. Item number twenty-four is a letter dated October nineteenth, twenty twenty, from Alden F. L. Harris II, one sixty-three South Consegman Ave., regarding reappointment to the Shrewsbury Media Connection Board of Directors. Item number twenty-five is an email dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty, from Lori Gardett, Treasurer Collector, to Darius Bialy, thirty G Shrewsbury Green, regarding the fiscal year 2020 annual real estate tax bill. So you'll see that Mr. Bialy asked a question of the treasurer's office about his tax bill and received a response from Lori Gardett, our treasurer collector. Item twenty-six is an email dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty, from Joanne M. Graziano, Chief Bureau of the Local Assessment, regarding the Notice of Preliminary Certification. And item number twenty-seven is an email dated October twenty-second, twenty twenty, from Lisa McCarthy-Licrisch, Office of Local and Regional Health, regarding the eviction diversion initiative. So that brings us to the end of the agenda. If there's nothing else to come before the board in open session, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mr. Samia.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
And myself, aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.